There you go. Thanks for the warning. Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled second meeting for the month of May. If you would please join me in silencing your cell phones. I would appreciate that. Then you will not interrupt the meeting. Meeting is in order. Mr. Fox, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Lorand, if you please take the roll.
Mayor Holmes?
Here.
Paula Lawson?
Here.
Darrell Rickert?
Here.
Steven Adams?
Present.
Mike Hill?
Present.
The record show we have a full quorum. Counsel, any amendments or conflicts with the current agenda?
None here.
And I guess I should go back to, oh, there are visitors that come out. Okay. Okay, this is an action item number five, consent calendar. Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor, council members, on the consent calendar, we have the regular council minutes of April 28, 2021, our regular and special bills as presented, and the consideration of acceptance of improvements to Corbin Crossing. This is the streets and curbs, gutters, and infrastructure that's in the Corbin Crossing subdivision. Excuse me. Corbin Crossing subdivision.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor?
I do.
Never mind. Steven?
Could you tell me more about Corbin Crossing? Because there's nothing in the packet about it.
Normally, we would have something in the packet, but Mr. Phillips, who is our inspector, asked to have this put on the agenda last council meeting, and he has been out with COVID for the last three weeks. So I don't have the details of this, other than they passed all the inspections. It's the streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, water, sewer lines, and all that is that is required to be completed before they can move forward with any other construction.
Those passed.
Passed inspections as they should.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rickert?
Approved consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion made. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hill?
Could we pull five C? Could we table that till the next meeting when there is more information that's available to us before approving?
Well, I guess you can with the consent of the council.
That's what I'm asking is, I mean, for discussion that, I mean, for us to approve something without having anything presented that normally we might have otherwise.
Is there anything unusual with this at all? I mean, it's usually a pass.
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor.
Is Kevin Jump on the line, Ben Chams?
No, he is not. He left for vacation.
I think we need to make a motion on it tonight. As it has been stated.
Well, there actually is a motion and a second, so we should go ahead and vote on that, and that'll tell us if we need to table it from there, I guess. So Lorand, if you please take the roll.
Darrell Rickert?
Aye.
Paula Lawson?
Aye.
Michael Hill?
Nay.
And Steven Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, ceremonies and reports. We have none tonight. Visitors' comments. This is an opportunity to address concerns that are not on the current agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. Unless you remain very interesting. Anyone like to come forward? Seeing none, do we have anybody online that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, it looks like those that are online have not raised their hand, wish to speak.
Okay, moving on. No old business, no public hearings. Ten A. This is an action item. Consideration of the purchase agreement for parcel two for the State Highway 53 and Myra Road intersection project. It must be four of these. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so as the city council is aware that the appraisals have come in, the city council did approve the appraisals and asked our consultant to move forward with presenting the appraisals as a purchase option for right-of-way and easements for the Highway 53 and Myra Road intersection. This is for the purpose of building a stoplight at that intersection. Parcel number two has approved and the appraisal and accepted the offer for the purchase of that right-of-way, and it is now up for the city council to review that and approve that if it is the wish of the council.
Counsel, any questions?
No, I thought it was done very well.
Certainly entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion too. I have to authorize you to sign it, the mayor. I authorize the mayor to sign the purchase agreement for parcel number two or the State Highway 53 and Myra Road intersection project.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Lorand, if you take the roll.
Paula Lawson?
Aye.
Michael Hill?
Aye.
Darrell Rickert?
Aye.
Steven Adams?
Aye.
The action item, consideration of resolution impact fee advisory committee for fire districts. Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and council, before you tonight is a resolution that has been issued on behalf of all of the fire districts that you see up on the screen in Cootney County. They are asking for an advisory committee to study impact fees for the fire districts. It would include all cities and the county and all fire districts to go through this process to view if there is a need for impact fees and what those impact fees may be. This is the preliminary requirement prior to starting up the committee. If this were what you're voting on today is just to have the committee. You're not voting on whether or not to have the impact fee. I think that's important, the state right up front. And so if this goes through this process and if they advise the cities about an impact fee and what that may be, then an ordinance would need to be passed, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the fire district would need to be formed, and several other things down the road before there would actually be an impact fee for the fire district. So this is an advisory committee only. Other things would come down the road if it needed.
Excuse me.
Counsel, any questions?
I do. Because we don't have a fire department under the city of Rathrum. How are we going to collect the fees for that district?
The intergovernmental agreement would be very specific on that, that it would be with the building permit, just like the impact fees for circulation in parks right now.
And then we would have to make a check out to the fire district.
That's correct.
What work personnel?
And so they would have to do that. We do that with post-balls cap fees. We do it with sewer fees. It's not something that we have not done before as far as doing an agreement with a different governmental entity, but yes, that is correct.
Okay.
It would be a tracking system, and whatever fees that we receive would go into a pot of money, and then either on a quarterly, semi-annual, or annual basis, depending upon the intergovernmental agreement, we would cut a check for the full amount of the impact fees that were collected.
And be a given amount.
So this has come up before, and we went through a process. It wasn't as nicely done, so I'm happy that they would like to talk to everybody before they decided to insist that we do it.
Fire districts.
Fire district, yes, before. And as did the highway districts, which would probably be next. Some of the issues were Northern Lakes Fire Department is in two cities and a county. So would fees collected inside of the city of Rathrum then be spent in the county? For instance, they have a fire station on the other side of Hayden Lake.
Right.
So there is an issue there. There was an issue, and I think they've resolved that, that each and every one of them wanted to charge a different amount.
And that's what would be addressed in this advisory committee, because quite honestly, you wouldn't be able to do that successfully.
So I personally have no problems with the discussion. And I guess I'm trying to lead the council a little bit because I've been through this before, but there were issues. And whether they can be overcome or not, I don't know, but to have a discussion, it doesn't hurt anyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
My question was about the impact fees that it sounds like this is a this council or this committee would be would be something larger than just the city of Rathrum, and so they're looking at the impact fees countywide across all of the fire districts. And then if they come to, are they saying, you know, I mean, this is how much an impact fee should be for the entire county, or would it have to be something that like this is how much an impact fee should be for the city of Rathrum versus the city of Hayden, for instance, or somewhere else that might be within Northern Lakes Fire District? How would that potentially look? I mean, it sounded like Leon said that we couldn't have one blanket amount for the entire county.
Well, no, you can't have a blanket amount for the entire county. But what that blanket amount would have to be, it would have to be an intergovernmental agreement, because the county doesn't issue building codes or building permits within the city, and the city doesn't issue them within the county. The concern would be that whenever you do an impact fee study for, I'm going to use post-balls in Rathrum as an example, our circulation impact fees are different, because the level of service is different and so forth like that. So there, and their committees chose to either do part of the impact fee, all of the impact fee, but the point being is they are different. In a jurisdiction like the city of Rathrum, if we had two fire districts that kind of shared within the borders of Rathrum, we couldn't impose two separate impact fees, different amounts within the same city boundaries. Okay? And now, the fire districts, that doesn't play a part in Rathrum. The Northern Lakes Fire District is includes all of the city of Rathrum. However, you'll notice that all of these fire districts are within Cootney County. And so they can't have different impact fees per fire district that the county would charge differently for people, depending on where they built that in. So the advisory committee will probably go through the fact of how do we charge impact fees, what the impact fee should be, so that there was consistency through the whole thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. It seems like, almost says like to me that the each district is going to have their own committee.
Well, they're going to have to, but they are working together to do all of this stuff. So there's going to be, state law requires each fire district to have their own committee, but they're also going to work collectively in this whole thing so that they can stay consistent. It's going to be a very difficult process.
And it's going to increase our taxes, too.
No, it's not going to increase the taxes. It's going to increase the impact fees.
To rent, rent your house.
One more issue that came up last go-around on this is if someone was unhappy and decided to sue over the amounts, the collection rate, or how they were being handled, it would actually be the city that would be sued because they were collecting them, rather than the fire department that was receiving them. Has that been changed?
I do not know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hill?
Thank you. The, one other question I had that kind of leads towards that, too, is if the requirement of impact fees to be utilized within a set period of time, if impact fees are collected within the city of Rathrum, how do you determine that those fees have been adequately appropriated or expended within that set period of time to benefit those within that boundary? Wouldn't there be a requirement that, like, I mean, if I bought a house or built a house in the city of Rathrum and paid impact fees, and they built a fire station out in the county?
Now, the impact fee, there is no guarantee that the impact fee collected within the city of Rathrum for a fire district would prove to have a fire station built within the city of Rathrum. Okay? That was one of the concerns that we had in looking at school impact fees, although not allowed by state law, was that if the city of Rathrum collected an impact fee, gave it to the school district, and the school district built a school in Spirit Lake, then that's where, one of the reasons why we had concerns. Because once it goes into that board, that board gets to decide how it is spent. Now, as far as challenging whether or not an impact fee has been spent or not, that is up to the person that paid the impact fee, so not the homeowner, because the homeowner doesn't pay the building permit. It's the builder that pays the building permit. If the builder feels that the money hasn't been spent yet, they can challenge it. They can get proof then that the money's been spent. And if it hasn't been spent, then the builder gets the reimbursement. That's the way the state law is right now.
How?
Well, I think it was the NIBCA that sued in the builder's behalf.
But not for impact fees. That was for capital fees.
Okay, but there's no reason they couldn't do it for this, I would believe.
Well, that is correct. They would challenge whether or not those impact fees have been used, but then it would be up to the fire district to show that they've been used correctly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The impact fees, those can't be used for operational expenses. I'm certain they can be used for facilities, to build new facilities, but can they be used for other things such as like purchasing new fire engines or other capital expenditures?
Last go-around, they couldn't, but this go-around, a fire truck is allowed.
There was a change in legislation this year that allowed that, but but they cannot be used for operational expenses. They cannot be used for payroll. They cannot be used for, it has to be an item that is allowed by state law that is classified as a public facility.
You have a question?
Steven?
Leon, do I understand that this resolution was provided to us? We didn't write it?
That's correct.
Can you tell me why they have an eight-year term for the members and why they want at least two members to be in the development, building, construction trade? It could be more than two members.
I believe it's because of state law. Well, do you have an answer for that?
I don't. I have to check the code. I'm pulling it up really quick as we speak.
Thank you.
Are we waiting for Will Solanke or?
Yeah, he's pulling up the code.
It's probably going to take me a few minutes.
Okay. Any other questions while I'm looking?
I'd like to make a motion that we
You're not waiting for your answer to be?
No, 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 that we postponed until later in this meeting so we can get on to the business. So we don't have as much pressure on him to find something.
We only got a few things left here, so
Okay.
If we have a big long agenda, I can say, yeah, let's do that, but there's not much here.
Okay.
So I guess, once again, they are only asking for a commission to discuss this stuff.
That's correct.
And I'm, all I'm doing is pointing out there were issues before that need to be resolved before.
Obviously, they weren't, though.
They weren't, and I would have no I've got no desire to be involved with this myself, but commission-wise, I'm just answering questions.
So all we're doing is agreeing to stop the commission. Correct. This isn't an agreement to charge an impact fee or impose an impact fee. This is just to start a conversation.
And I think you ultimately end up with an intergovernmental agreement on how and where the money is going to be spent, as well as who's going to be on the committee. I think the, I didn't find the statute yet, but I think the statute does require two people from the trades to be on the impact fee committee. That's my reflection.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we do a consideration of resolution impact the advisory committee for the five fire districts.
Before someone seconds or doesn't second, let me ask one more question. Are there other cities being asked the same thing this week, or is this us as the zoning board? Do we know?
No, the information has gone out to all of the cities. I don't know their schedule, whether or not it's been on the agenda or not. This was sent to us prior right about the same time that we canceled the other meeting at the beginning of the month. So we've had this for a couple of weeks. I do not know whether or not the cities have passed the resolution, if they've considered the resolution. But I did talk to the lady that sent this out to me, Valerie, and she did say that they're asking this of all the cities in the, in the county and the county itself.
Okay. I only ask that because last time Spirit Lake voted to accept it all, and every other city said no. And then they had problems then giving back out of it. And once again, we're not agreeing to anything but to have a commission to discuss these issues.
So there's a motion?
There is a motion on the fourth.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I might mention that the impact fee committee requires at least five members and with at least two members who are active in the business of development, building, or real estate.
I have a question. What if you don't have one? Whether there's not a developer in town, because we're in the same boat, and we're trying to reason out if we have one or not.
You've got two real estate people in town, I'm sure.
Okay.
That's true.
Real estate, of course, not a developer, but yeah, I can see that. I'm trying to think real quick where the second one is, but I know we have a button.
I'm sure there's plenty of them.
Yeah, I bet there are.
If there's only one, I might get in the business.
But there's a lot of them in the state. So we had a motion and a second. Lorand, if you please take the roll.
Paula Lawson?
Aye.
Darrell Rickert?
Aye.
Steven Adams?
No.
And Mike Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, moving on. This is an action item, consideration of the purchase of BNS and A Municipal Software. This would be ten C.
Mr. Mayor, council, before you is a proposal for new software for the city of Rathrum. The software that we have currently right now is Casell software. It has shown to be outdated and has had errors with the operation, and the customer service board has been lagging in trying to get things fixed and resolved. This is the same software that was put out for proposal by the city of Hayden, the city of Moscow, and by the city of Sandpoint. And we're piggybacking on that RFP process that they have done so that we meet state laws and standards. This is a purchase of general ledger software, accounts payable software, cash receiving, fixed assets, cemetery management, utility billing. It also does personnel management, including payroll, human resources, timesheets, and community development software, which includes building department and field inspection. Right now, the software that we currently have does the financial management and the personnel management, but as I said, that it is lacking right now. It does not do the community development. The big difference here is tracking building permits, tracking inspections, doing onsite inspections, and doing things like that to do that. The total price, including excuse me, just one second, including the conversion, the software, the database setup, the importing, the training, and all of that that goes with that. They're actually out for 50 total days doing training in person with staff. That's not consecutive days. That is days based off of your needs. So for example, they'll be out here for two billing cycles for utility billing, so they'll come out when we run the bills for the first month, and they'll come out the second month to walk us through doing the bills again. So these aren't 50 consecutive days. These are 50 total days of training. And the total cost of the software plus some travel expenses for them to come back and forth for those training is the $187,110 plus $28,570, which puts it at about $215,000. Now, last year, the only reason this really is able to come up for consideration is last year we received about $250,000 in COVID money to help out with different things. This does qualify for the use of that COVID money and would be able to be used to pay for this software. It will help in all of the social distancing requirements, because people will be able to do their things online, including issuing permits, submitting them electronically, rather than building it, bringing in a hard copy. And it does some different improvements to our water system, our payroll system that we currently don't have. And it also allow us to charge those merchant service fees or convenience fees that we did last year during our budget process that we weren't able to impose because our software can't do it. So that would allow to charge for those things. Now, what we asked for in fees for those services, we're still not collecting credit cards yet on those because we can't charge those fees. So we're not out anything that we should have received. So we're good on that point. But this would allow us to start doing those type of things. So this qualifies for the use of that funding and will help us to be a little bit more accurate and thorough in both the collection, tracking, and communication with those involved with those different software pieces.
I think it's a great idea.
It's a big project, but it's, I think
With the approval of this, we would sign the paperwork and move forward. It would take approximately eight to nine months for the whole transition, conversion, and everything else. So this wouldn't be coming in and doing training until January or February, which is a really good time, because that's usually the slowest time of the year
Yep.
in that November through February timeframe, so.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I just want to make comment that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to make comment that seems like there's no better time to do this than now with this COVID money that we can use it on this. And the other thing that you had said before something about that if someone wanted to look and see where their permit process was, they'd go online to see where they're
They'll be able to log in with their username and password and see where they're at. They'll be able to log in with their username and password and see where they're at. The other thing that's really nice about this software and the community development side is that the, someone is submitting a building permit, whether it's a residential user or a builder, you know, for a shop in the backyard, or a builder for a house or something to that effect. Every time an inspection is done and the inspectors go out and complete that, there's an email that gets sent out that said whether or not it completed inspection or didn't complete inspection. So everybody's informed and communicated with every step of the way, and it'll help us to keep a better track of what's going on than what we have right now.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea, and we may not get the opportunity again like this to get one, get this, so I'd say we better jump on it.
Was that a motion?
No.
Steven, you have something else?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment for those in the audience. This was presented to us at the last meeting that we had at the city, and this is basically free money for the city. It's not costing the city anything to update their software system. The software system they're currently using is a kludge, it's not well-supported, and this is a, like, one-time opportunity to come up to speed.
And well.
Michael?
Leon, I had a question. You mentioned that this is piggybacking off of another city's RFP. Were there other respondents to those RFPs, and have we considered their proposals?
Yes, there was other respondents, but this met the requirements of the RFP for all of them, where the others did not.
Any more questions?
Well, I will make a motion to purchase the BNS and A municipal software as presented.
I'll second. Motion made by Paula, seconded by Steven. Any other consideration, any discussion? Lorraine, if you please take the roll.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Dale Rickert.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Michael Hill.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, 11A Finance reporting, Melissa.
Mayor and Council, as you have in your packet, this is just kind of our finance and administration monthly activities. A lot of these things are reoccurring each month. This is just kind of what we've all kind of been doing. It includes some of the stuff Leon works on, that we work on together, as well as the ladies up front. If you go ahead and move on down. This is our financial through April 30th. As you can see, we're about 70% through the fiscal year. The top part is our revenues, which everything looks really good. We'll still be getting some revenues in, we'll still be getting our last, our last of our state revenues. We usually get a few more, our highway users, our sales tax, and our revenue sharing in June. If you scroll on down to the water fund, or I'm sorry, expenditures, that's fine. Revenues are looking great, they're right where they should be, they're actually a little over what we anticipated, which is always a good thing. If you look through our expenditures, again, like I just, you said, we're about 70% through the year, so everyone's doing pretty well with their expenditures, with salaries, benefits. The other non-personnel is everything but salaries and benefits, so looks good through there. Going down to the water fund, same thing. And you'll notice too, I just wanted to point this out, because I had somebody asking the other day, the water fund, if you look at salaries and benefits in the water fund as well as the sewer fund, that they're, they're very, very similar. That's, that's not my mistake. We have several employees, I think probably about 10 employees, that their wages are split between the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund. Our water sewer guys that support both, some are 50/50, some are 50% water, some are 50% sewer. There's several of us that are split in thirds, because we support general fund activities as well as water fund activities and sewer fund activities. So I had somebody say, well, why are those so close? Is that right? And I'm like, it is, and, and here's why. We do track that every year, so I just kind of wanted to point that out. Other than that, like I said, I'm really happy with how everything looks, especially at this point in the year. Overall, our expenditures are at 50%, and we're, like I said, we're at 70% through the year, so we do watch those fairly closely. And that is, that part of the financial. This is our governmental, our impact fees and our enterprise funds. We did change the way this looked a little bit. As you'll see, anything that has restricted after it, those are monies that we can only spend by state law on those certain activities, or they have been deemed restricted by the mayor and council. So for example, designated revenue is something that we started about eight years ago. It's basically a three-month operational reserve if the city, if something were to happen, or like, everyone got COVID, let's say, and we couldn't, you know, not everybody could come in. That was something that we have budgeted each year to put money into. We haven't done that the last several years, because we feel pretty comfortable where it's at. That's about three months of the city's operations and maintenance for the month, or three months of it. So the same thing, everything that you see that's restricted is not just money that you can use on anything, it's very limited on what you can spend it on. And so we wanted to show that, so everyone was a little bit more aware. There's really quite a bit that we have that is restricted for certain projects and whatnot. Again, and I'll kind of talk about this, the general fund, which is our main checking account, looks like it has no money. Every night, they sweep out, that repo sweep account is a safety measure for the city that the bank goes in and they sweep that money out and put it back in the next day as, as things roll in. So that always looks a little bit hokey. And then our water deposit account, that's what we have in the water deposit account. When people come in and pay, new account, they pay their $86 water deposit, we hold it in that account, and they get that back within a year if they stay current, we apply it. And that is the financial through April 30th for tonight. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
City Administrator, Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and Council, short report, but we did get a lot of the questions and the answers up on our website from our last, our town hall meeting that we had on May 6th. We also published the results of the survey on our website as well. And we're looking at, as Melissa mentioned, we're working on our budget, so we've got several different things that we're working on in preparation for the budget coming up. And that's, and preparing for the AIC annual conference in June. So, okay.
Moving on, Mayor reports appointments, no appointments. Obviously, there are three proclamations. Memorial Day proclamation will be read this coming up Monday at noon. And I would imagine the Rathrum Day's proclamation will be read somewhere during that timeframe. So council reports, let's start with Mr. Hill. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get it unmuted. Every time I touch it, it switches to the other screen. I, I had some, some questions about the, the limits of authority of the, of the council, specifically with regards to ordinances. The ordinance that was submitted by a citizen as a citizen initiative, as I understand it, there was a portion of that that was rejected because it's something that with land use couldn't be touched by citizen initiative. But is there anything that the, that the city council can do to enact something of similar ordinance to, to have a similar effect, to effectively control the rate of growth? And then additionally, building on that, as we just saw with the fire district's impact fees, I was surprised to hear that we didn't, that we weren't collecting impact fees, that growth is supposed to pay for itself, and, and that there's been all these houses that keep getting built year after year after year that aren't contributing towards those impact fees. And so there was, I, I'm not sure that it was Northern Lakes Fire District, but there was a, an article regarding another fire district and, and the lack of, of impact fees that were being collected, and the thoughts about, you know, running a bond and having it pay for it versus the, the impact fees. If, to me, as we continue to build houses that aren't paying that, or issuing building permits for properties that are being built that aren't paying those fees towards the services that, that are being further strained, further demand being put on those services, if there's a way for us to, to do something with that, something like, also, sorry, my scattered, scattered thought. The, the bill, was it 389 that limited the, the new growth to 90%? There was one time that Leon was talking about the effects that that could have, and where some cities then might have a tendency then to restrict their growth to match that percentage, so that then there isn't revenue that's being lost. And I was curious how these things might all play together.
Mr. Mayor, if I could start with at least the impact fees. We do charge impact fees, we charge circulation and park impact fees. As far as fire districts, we cannot simply impose a fire district impact fee without a committee such as what was on the resolution and an intergovernmental agreement. So unless the fire districts want to come forward and start that process up, we can't just arbitrarily charge an impact fee for that. It has to follow the state standards. So the impact fees that we are currently collecting for the things that the city can collect for, we're doing that. So I want to make sure that that's clear. We are collecting circulation impact fees, and we are collecting park impact fees.
As, as far as new growth, not paying for new growth, they still get that tax revenue, it's just the next year.
Yeah.
Impact fees just accelerate when they start paying their taxes. So once they've lived in a year, they are still paying property taxes in.
Yeah, they, they are, and that's the new construction. Now, on the 90% deal, what I was working on and trying to figure out is that 90% is always going to be 90%. So even if you grew one house, you'd only get 90% of that. So that would be a concern. It, it wouldn't matter if you grew one house or 1,000 houses, it's still 90%. The one thing that I had talked about was in making up the difference was whether or not we would look at that 3% property tax ability to take that to make up the difference now, so that it was a full 100% equivalent of new construction. The state statute with House Bill 389, however, put a limitation on an 8% increase in your property tax collections. That is where you would probably say we need to look at where that would be as far as new growth within our city. There's a concern with that. Let's say a business, a $100 million business came in and built in a year. That would take up your 8% cap, and you would have nothing for the residential buildings that were going on. And that doesn't need as many services as residential, so you're going to have to really play a balancing game in figuring out what those things are going to be. And I have no idea how you would figure that out or put that in place, because you wouldn't have that stuff until after you've already issued a whole bunch of building permits and things like that, because each building permit has a different dollar value. So you'd have to really track it by dollar values, and that doesn't necessarily mean that what they put on the building permit as a dollar value is what the county has on their assessment when the thing goes through, because there's no apples-to-apples comparisons and work on that. As far as the ordinance goes, I'll defer that to Will to kind of talk about.
Are we still talking about just fire districts?
No, no.
Or impact fees generally?
I'm talking about the initiative that was issued, I believe Mike's talking about the initiative that was issued and whether or not the city could just adopt an ordinance such as that, rather than going through the initiative process.
Yeah, there, there are some potential constitutional problems with property rights. I think you'd have, you'd have claims that that you were taking property rights from property owners to add an expectation to build if you were, you know, limiting the number of building permits. If I'm annexed into the city and I've got five lots and you aren't letting me build on them because you've already used up the quota, then I have a potential claim against the city for taking my property, because I'm not able to use it for the highest and best use.
Gotcha.
And so I think you have to look at the constitutional rights of property owners as well as what your, what your limitations are in crafting the ordinance. I think you would still have, have to follow the Local Planning Act. And there are some limitations in the Local Planning Act that would probably prevent you from not allowing property owners to have the highest and best use of their property, so. Any ordinance that you come up with has to be evaluated with those conditions to make sure that you're in line with the Idaho Constitution as far as protecting property owners, and that you're in concert with the Local Planning Act in what you're doing.
So in short, is there a way that the city could craft an ordinance that could, with a goal in mind of, of trying to control the rate of growth, is that possible?
I think the council has the power to not annex property in the future, that would control growth in the city, but it would cause the city to be surrounded by a bunch of larger lots that are inefficient and would prevent the future growth of the city, and would also cause problems with the aquifer, because they're going to be on septic systems. So the trade-off of not having the growth in the city would be to have more growth just outside the city and to have some potential injury to the aquifer.
Or potentially another city surrounding you.
Yeah, or both.
Yeah, that's. Okay, moving on, Mrs. Laws.
I have decided, because of my health challenges I've had this last year, that I am going to step down as the council president. And I want to thank you all for the support you've given me, that you're stuck with me till the election is over.
Okay. Could I ask for just a short thing of writing to?
No.
That you resign.
Of course. Can I use?
Resign.
Email you?
Yeah.
I'll email Leon.
Email to the city, yeah.
Okay.
And in that case, Mr. Mayor, on the next agenda, we'll place on a consideration of a new council president.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Rickert?
So I go to the KMPO meeting once a month also, and it was really interesting this last month. And do I have stuff on the computer?
Yes, sir.
So the Hutter project, they are going forward with it. It's becoming a real thing. So I've been going to these meetings, but I, I still have a lot of questions myself, so I'm sure the mayor and Leon can both help me with this as we go along, but what, what they gave us at the KMPO meeting was a little bit of a commitment on it, they actually have realigned. They actually have realigned, um. The the bypass, it actually goes up Atlas and then it turns, uh, takes a, uh, turn to the east. Before the railroad tracks and heads off down and to to beat up with, um, Bechal. Let me put that up, yeah, please, okay. As you can see there, it used to, um. Goes go a little bit further straight, I think it was just parallel to the to the railroad tracks before, they they kind of cut in on it now. So and on this map, the the other maps that we have too, you can see where the interchanges will be. But the interesting thing about, um. See where the interchanges will be or not interchange by off-ramps.
So basically, Hunter Road bypass will actually go underneath Prairie Avenue and you would take an exit. To get onto Prairie Avenue that would have a stoplight and so forth to to do that.
And and it'll be limited access, there'll be. Only a few on and offs.
Right, and it looks that.
At high speed, I think we were talking when I was on the board, like eighty miles an hour one time.
Well, moving that doesn't hit the mile per hour yet that I know of, but there's gonna be a, uh. A frontage road which we probably assume is probably gonna be old Atlas Road, there'll be a frontage road down, uh, pretty. All the way down to where at least where it heads off to the east. But the most interesting thing about this is there are some charts on here, and we're talking about infrastructure and trying to keep up with infrastructure with, um. With the, uh, population, there, we have some charts on here that shows. What, how it'll affect the the traffic. So like for Meyer Road. Between, uh, uh, Meyer Road between Prairie, from Prairie to Hayden, with the bypass, it was, it, we got a hundred and eighty-eight cars. And without it, we got three hundred and fifty-five, it's forty, forty-seven percent decre- decrease just on that area alone. To me, that's amazing, that's really gonna help us, and, uh. If you look through the whole thing, forty-one is actually the biggest winner between, um, I think it's between Post Falls and and Rathrum, they, um. If you look at some of the decreases on that. Can you go down a little bit further?
Goes to Ramsey Road?
No, I I'm sorry, uh. So come over and I can't, can you kind of? So you see southbound. Going from, um, basically Rathrum to Post Falls, you you see the percentages of of cars that are gonna decrease on Highway forty-one, and to me, that's amazing too. The thirty, a total of thirty-three percent decrease. Or an average of thirty-three percent decrease through all the, um, now now go back over a little bit, so I can see where we're at, uh. So there we go, thank you, so like between Hope to Prairie. Cars that fifty-one percent decrease, so the amount of cars that's gonna go through with the Hutter interchange interchange, to me, that that to me is amazing. So there's a, there's all kinds of, Leon asks these, did you make copies of these?
Yeah, they're right by your computer.
So we have copies of these for everybody, but if you look at them, you you got the charts in here that shows you the traffic, um. And all the different areas and how the a Hutter bypass is going to affect it, and, uh. Boy, I'm telling you that this is really gonna be a good thing for us.
Daryl, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, the numbers that they're, the statistics that they're utilizing, um, for the traffic counts, um, like for instance, without, uh, Hutter. Is that on based on today's, um, traffic volumes or is that based on a projection of future growth as to? What the traffic volumes might look like, say, in, uh, twenty forty it looks like?
Um, I I believe it is based on future traffic volume, but I don't know how far out it goes, so I can't remember, do you remember, Leon? Or it is, it is based on future.
Yeah, I ju- I just saw that, so it's assuming what the, not just what the traffic volumes are today, or what they'll be in twenty forty, but also assuming what the, um. The increased population might be by that time.
Yeah. I believe so, yes, and, um, and that's why the percentages are also though, I mean, even if the car volume goes up, I think the percentage has pretty much stayed the same.
Okay, and Leon, if you wouldn't mind, could you email that to me by chance?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Actually, I think it says down here, KMPO twenty forty.
Yeah, one of the things that's interesting, so this was one of the big things that was on that, uh, increased registration fee vote that that came up. This was one of, gonna be one of the uses for that revenue, um, this year's legislature, uh. Brought to the table eighty million dollars, it's coming out of the sales tax revenue money. Per year to go for, um, traffic roads such as this Hunter Road bypass, so, um. That, some of the money will come from that and some of the money will come from, uh, federal grants, so if you're wondering where that. It's been able to be bumped up quite a bit because of that legislation that authorized eighty million dollars of new money to Idaho State Transportation Department.
So part of the thinking back when I was on this, highway ninety-five traffic was really local traffic. Because all the stoplights and things, so that was gonna get turned over to the city of Corlaine or the highway districts.
Correct.
That's still happening.
That's my understanding.
And so Pleasant View was built, but it's been closed for a year, so actually forty-one has a lot of traffic on it.
Yeah.
That doesn't belong to us, it is traffic heading north. And the other bypass is gonna alleviate that, our most, a lot of that, I mean, a lot of, that's a huge percentage of that.
So I mean, you put that with the fact that, uh, highway forty-one will go to be a four lane also at that time. Highway forty-one's gonna be a dream to go down compared to what it is now, so I I think the important part about this is that, you know, we always. Hear a lot about infrastructure keeping up, I think this is a major step towards, um, the increased traffic that we're gonna have that's really gonna help.
Yeah, part of it's driven because there's a lot of growth up north too.
Right. And we know that many of these cars that come through here don't stop here, they keep on going.
Well, I call this a gateway to the north just because of everybody that's north of us here. And growing.
So that's basically it, there's a lot of other projects, interesting projects that's going on in, uh, around here too, like. The reconfiguration of, I believe it's exit seven, uh, the Rathrum, Post Falls are gonna be in the process of reconfiguring that whole, uh, area, I think that's one of the pro- one of the biggest priorities.
They're designing it.
Yeah, well, it's one of their biggest priorities right now.
Yeah, it'll be substantially different. Okay, Mr. Rapples?
Nothing to say.
Okay, uh, looks like we're moving on to fourteen, uh, it's a budget workshop, so let's take a five-minute break and let Park and Rec, uh. Set up for whatever they need to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Don't get all interested now, I'm just gonna start to get more interested, so we get no ideas.
I wanna go back.
Sorry, I was, I was pausing, I was recording.
Oh, um, the budget schedule, I always put that in there just so everyone's aware and we can make sure that. We don't miss or if we do have to miss, they have horror.
So the next meeting on our budget workshops is going to be next Wednesday at six o'clock. And we're gonna discuss the Hutter Works budget. Okay, okay, uh, just as a reminder, like I did at the last meeting, this meeting will not may have any, this part of the meeting will not have any final decisions, and then. Um, we're looking for recommendations to make adjustments to the budget, general direction. Uh, final decisions will kind of start when we approve the final draft budget at the end of July. And then the final approval is the public hearing process on August eighteenth and the adoption of the budget ordinance, so.
Glad you said that, cuz I was gonna correct you. Those are, that's the final decision.
That's the final decision. Everything leads up to it though, so, um, we do have, um. That to go on, um, Melissa's.
And I, if you will, I, cuz I'd like to remind everybody, if you have objections or you you need to say something, this is the time. This is the workshop, don't wait until the last day.
Okay, like with the police department, Melissa's put together this nice graph, I'm gonna hold it up in front of my screen cuz I don't have it digitally on the computer right now. Um, this graph shows the, um, parks and rec revenues. The park and rec expenditures, and then what is supplemented by property taxes, so, um. That's there for your information as well as we go about this, and then Melissa and Eric. How about it?
You guys all have a copy of the, uh, budget workshop in front of you.
Eric, don't forget to mic up.
You're not on?
Is it muted? Is it green on the top?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's red.
The light, we think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
There it is. Yeah, so the budget workshop that you guys have in front of you for the, uh, park and rec, um. Sat down with staff, we just kind of went through, um. What our needs were, what, um, what kind of changes we would need, um, so what I've done is just highlighted, uh, in the green section there. Any changes that we felt like we needed to make, increase, decrease, cut, uh, we just, uh. Highlighted it right there.
Their portion is, they don't have the green, basically, what I would do is just tell them that everything stays the same except for these numbers.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they have a cool copy.
Yeah, let's say account numbers, that'll work.
Yeah, we'll do that, so we'll just kind of start with the, uh, park and rec administration side, which is the ten four three five section. I'll just hit the ones that we're looking to change, so we're looking at, uh, like with fuel, ten four three five, three thirty. We bumped that up a little bit with the increasing fuel prices.
I don't think that's enough, um.
Okay.
Thousand dollars.
Do you have a, uh, opinion on suggestion?
Tell us about the actual.
The actual's only what, that's so far this year, I guess.
We budgeted eight thousand, so next year we're looking at budgeting, uh, an extra thousand dollars.
But the actual is what, twenty-five fifty-two for so, the year-to-date?
That's where we're at right now, I'm not sure if if that is totally up to date or how accurate that that actually is.
I don't see it being bumped up at all, I seen it being exactly the same as last year's budget.
Last year's budget was eight thousand, this year's budget's nine thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at things that were highlighted here on my sheet.
No, it's the fuel.
So it's ten thirty-five, three thirty?
Correct.
Thank you.
Eric, if I can, can I ask a general budget question?
Yes.
The money budgeted twenty twenty-one, if that's not spent by the end, excuse me, by the end of the fiscal year, what happens to that money that's not spent?
The money that is not spent by the end of the fiscal year basically goes into the fund balance of the city of Rathrum.
It just carries over to next year's budget.
So, Stephen, think of it like your monthly finances, let's say, so say that you have. Three thousand dollars in your checking account and for the month, your expenses are only two thousand, so that leftover or the money that you didn't expend goes to the next month.
New bicycle.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, maybe the fuel is enough, hold on.
Right.
You know, cuz they've only spent twenty-seven, twenty-five hundred so far this year, or three quarters of the year.
They'd only buy five thousand last year, so.
Okay.
Okay, you're on. Uh, moving down, uh, the next line would be ten four three five, uh, five ten, that's telephone and communications, so we recently hired two. Uh, they're not full-time employees, they're gonna be year-round, and they're classified as permanent part-time, so they're gonna be here year-round and they do not have cell phones. Uh, but we'd like to get them cell phones, so they're not using their own personal phones, uh, while they're on common shift. Uh, so that's where that additional cost would be, we estimated what it would cost for two phones.
Thousand dollars a year?
I think by the time we we talked about that.
We do get government discounts on Verizon for our phones, so we don't pay the same consumer price as the, uh, individuals out on the market.
Yeah, I talked with Melissa and we looked at different plans and I don't remember, it was kind of a basic plan, but it, that's about what it would cost for two phones for the, for the year. Excuse me. Uh, moving down to ten four three five, uh, seven sixty, that would be a new line. All our other, uh, cemetery parks, rec, we all, we all have a, um. We have equipment purchases greater than a thousand and equipment purchases less than a thousand.
Well, let's put, um, the three hundred up above because usually anything over a thousand, that usually has like a thousand or two thousand dollars in it, sort of a lot of it.
So is that in the wrong line?
Yeah, yeah, we'll move it, it's okay, we'll move it up, the three hundred dollars will move up to seven fifty-five instead of in seven sixty.
Okay.
That three hundred dollars would, you know, it's just something that we would purchase for the, not for the office but for the building, uh, any, any equipment. That we might have to purchase for the building, uh, that's what those, that money would be used for. Ten four three five nine twenty, we had an increase there of five hundred dollars, that was to update our copier. Uh, City Hall just, uh, I think recently updated their copier and talking to Leon, that's about what it would cost for us to update ours and it would. Just faster printing.
Those copiers are getting to the end of their useful life as well, so it's time for an update.
Uh, moving on to parks, which would be the ten four three eight, uh, restaurant supplies, uh, looking for, uh, an increase there. Uh, just more people, parks are busier, uh, supplies are slightly starting to go up, so that's the reason for the increase there. Uh, same thing with fuel, um. It's a small increase of fuel prices, I can't really anticipate how high the fuel prices are gonna go, but they have gone up, so. Uh, ten four three eight five seventy, that's equipment rental, um, unfortunately, we lost our bucket truck. It broke down and talking to our mechanic, it's beyond repair, it's gonna cost more to fix it than what it's worth. So we added in some money for the equipment rental, um, anytime we have to get up, we're gonna have to rent a a lift. So we increased on a little bit. Park maintenance.
Uh, Eric, can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
That lift, the the bucket truck that you're, you've got, um, what is the cost of a used or new bucket truck, have you had the chance to look at that yet?
I have not, um, I know we paid, I believe we paid thirty-five hundred for that.
Does that come J and R?
We got that one from J and R, we kind of got a deal on that, but.
It's not something we use all the time, but.
I just wanted to know, rental's great, if we start using it more often, we may have to look at purchasing another bucket truck.
I'll, I can check it.
Let me ask this, what's broke on it?
Uh, the exhaust manifold is, there's, it's there snapped off and it's got a hydraulic leak. Rick, Rick got a quote on fixing that, the, um, manifold. That's the bolt is broke off and it's, it was gonna cost like five thousand dollars.
That's not right. I just had my manifold done to my Dodge and I think it was like four hundred bucks. They, uh, actually drill them out.
Yeah, the the whole motor would have to be pulled and I don't.
They didn't, didn't put the motor on my Dodge and I'm sure it's a lot tighter than that is, so. Um, I don't have any problem with this budgeting, but I, before we decide that that truck is broke for a broken manifold, I think we need to get another opinion.
Okay, what what year truck is it?
It's, uh, eighty, early eighties. It's eighty-three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Another thing to consider too is they, um, we, uh, my work, we use a bucket trailer, um, that's a, an independent unit, so it doesn't have the, it wasn't as expensive to get the, a trailer unit than what it was for an entire truck.
That, that would be true.
Is that electric, is that one electric bike?
I, I don't use it. I don't, I don't know. I know it's got a gas-powered motor on it, so I think it's hydraulic, but, but I'm not sure. I could look into it if you'd like.
I was just asking, the one we rent from Sun Rental is, it's an electric one. And it's a tow behind. That you just tow it behind your truck, and it's got outriggers.
That's what ours is. Does your guys', that one that you rent, does that have a, like a Briggs and Stratton little gas motor on it?
Uh, no, it's just all, it's all electric. It's, it's just plugged in and then charged, and I get, you get like eight hours out of it.
I don't think ours is that. I, I, I think ours has a Briggs and Stratton little motor on it that runs, I think, a hydraulic pump and, and uses that way, and it's a tow behind. Um, and if I remember right, the reason we got that is cause it was considerably cheaper than a, a, a lift on a truck, and we don't use ours very frequently either.
Okay. Yeah, no, Mayor, I can talk to Rick some more and see if uh, maybe we can have another.
I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. Uh, park maintenance, so we, for the first time this year, we've started to contract out some of our spraying and herbicide for some of the parks. So, we, our three main parks, which would be Majestic, City, and Stubbs, we're having that done three times this year. So, we'd like to continue to do that, um, rather than store and handle uh herbicides and chemicals. Um, our staff just does not have the time to, to do that. It takes a lot of time, and so we've crammed some numbers, and it's about a wash. Might be slightly more if it contracted out, but when you factor in not having to store it, um, and handle the, the product and stuff, um.
That's a big deal.
Just about as cheap just to contract it out. Moving down to ten four three eight, seven three five, which would be park amenities and replacement. That's a line item where we take out any of our uh park amenities, like picnic tables, trash cans. Um, we'd like to bump that up a little bit. Um, we definitely need more trash cans in the parks. We're doing pretty good on tables, but uh trash cans, we're lacking. And we're kinda phasing out the old metal cans that we used to use, and we're putting in new decorative uh trash cans to make it look a little more appealing. Ten four three eight, seven sixty, um, a new artificial Christmas tree, we were looking at that. This might be a, a split with other departments, it was just an idea. Um, each year, we go out and cut a tree down on a tree farm, and uh we looked at some options of just buying an artificial tree that we could store. And there's, there's options where you can start with a twelve-foot tree, and it's a certain price, and then you can add on porphyry each year for, you know, you can just buy a section, and you can add to the bottom of it, and just keep building up if you'd, if you'd like. So, just to start out with a, I think it's a sixteen-foot tree, it's about twelve thousand dollars. And then it's, I think it's two thousand dollars for a, a new four-foot section if you wanna add on to it. So, it's just a thought of the, um, maybe police, uh, parks, public works, admin, maybe we can split the cost on that. That's more of a.
Cause it was all together in sections, and did you store them in sections? Is it kinda like the one we have here that you?
Yeah, it's stackable, so it's, it's got a steel frame, and you just kinda stack the frames on top of each other. Then when you add a section, you add it to the bottom, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Is that seven sixty?
Yes.
So, that actually went down?
Yeah.
Well, that was, cause last year, we, we purchased the uh Ventrack, the snow blower.
Eric, does this still include um re, uh, money for attachments for the Ventrack?
Uh, no.
Is there some attachments that you guys have been looking at to, to include like a mower deck, or any of those other things with the Ventrack?
Yeah, so what we've got so far was the, the snow blower, of course, the cab, uh, we got a ball field cooler for the ball fields. We did not.
We need to use it, okay.
We, we haven't here budgeted for um, that same line item, a new mower, next to, I don't know if it shows up on your sheet, but no. So, it's got the artificial Christmas tree, and then a new, new lawnmower in there too, so that could be used for either a mower deck for the Ventrack, or just an additional mower, so.
Okay. I just thinking that we've made a purchase on that equipment, and using it every year-round, we get what we need to make that a very useful tool in our.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's an option. Instead of buying a, a separate mower, we could have purchased the mower deck, or has the attachment for the Ventrack, that's included in that thirty-five thousand, so that would be the, the.
Yeah, it's yours, the second mower.
Yeah, mower and the Christmas tree, so. Uh, ten four three eight, seven eighty, that's park building facilities, that's where we take out, anytime we have to call in an electrician or plumber. Oh, that, I was gonna say, I was trying to read, that's five thousand. So, that's, we're just busy here, um, in lawnmower service, polster, plumbing issues, uh, electrical issues, those kinds of things, as the parks get, get busier. You can see where we're at. Right now, we're kind of in the hole there, and so we're sixty-five, almost uh sixty-six hundred dollars.
So, what makes you think five thousand will be enough if you're spending sixty-five already this year?
Well, we have, we took out um the electric, some of the electrical for the new buildings, so that's something that we wouldn't have in the future, we could in the new whole building. So, some of that expense will come out of there here this year.
Uh, moving on to.
Eric, I can interrupt. Before you go to the next session, Melissa, you're taking notes? Uh, back on page one, line item two hundred, I assume that should be in the agenda for our future employee benefits.
Okay, wait, wait, what, uh, are you at ten four three five, two hundred?
Four three eight, two hundred.
Okay, um, let's see.
This is the fourth item under parks.
It's under parks. Employee benefit.
Uh, we're not going to discuss um employee benefits.
But it's not highlighted as, we're gonna discuss it.
Oh, oh, it should be, maybe not in the version, um, yes, we will discuss it.
And the same thing under recreation, second page near one.
Yeah.
That's not highlighted either.
Oh, so mine is, is your case is not? I wonder if it cut off the, okay, I've got it highlighted on here, I wonder if it cut it off, the pink?
Okay.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks, Stephen.
Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, moving on to the cemetery, which would be ten four three nine. Fuel prices, uh, it's ten four three nine, three thirty. An increase there for the fuel. Uh, ten four three nine, six hundred, that's maintenance. Uh, same thing we talked about with parks, we'd like to start, uh, next year, doing the contracting out of the uh herbicide and fertilizer in the cemetery. Kind of doing the same thing we talked about in the parks, starting with the three treatments per year. So, that's the reason for the increase there. Sanitation, we bumped that up. Uh, prices of uh our sandican units that we have out there, they're, they've gone up a little bit, so we've added some extra money to cover those costs.
Just a bunch of crap.
You're not either.
Uh, that's it for cemetery recreation.
Can I ask a question about this spraying?
Sure.
Um, it makes sense for, don't get me wrong, to contract it out, provided it's either more efficient, or you don't have time to actually do it, or it's cheaper, or a combination of all those things, is that the case?
Yeah, we crunched the numbers, maybe if you like for cost.
Right.
It's, it's pretty much a wash, when we factor in all of the, the, the fuel, the staff time, uh, the, the cost of the product, it's pretty much a wash. It's like.
I'm only asking in case someone asks me.
Sure, yeah.
So, it makes sense to me that, but it's, it's then true that it isn't costing more, but it's giving you more time for your staffs.
Definitely more time, yeah.
Okay. Makes sense.
Plus, we don't have to store the, talk to.
That's right. Well, we have somebody to blame with the, the park trip route, right?
Yeah. Right. Recreation, let's see. So, recreation is ten four four zero, uh, operating, I'm sorry, ten four four zero, four two nine, professional services, uh, classes. We cut that back dramatically, and the reason for that is, that's where we take out money for all of our instructors and referees, where we have been in the past. So, what we've done is added a line item specifically for, it's called camps and classes, which would be, I would guess on the next page for you guys.
It's below ten four four zero, eight seven five.
So, camps, camps and classes is, like I said, where we take out uh money for, pay our instructors, referees, contractors for special events and classes. So, by adding that line item, we made a, we made cuts in a couple of different line items to kinda offset that.
What was it, account number?
Yeah. Of the camps and classes?
Yeah, the new. Yeah, but they're, it's at the bottom of ten four four oh, eight seven five.
Oh, it's add new line.
There it is, it says add, add new line caller.
Yeah, it'd be at the very bottom, like the rec. Yeah, at the recreation. Did you see it there, Paula? Page three, camps and classes.
Yep, right there.
Oh, camps and classes, thank you.
You bet. So, yeah, that's where we take out the money for instructors, reps, and contractors. It's just gonna, to kinda tidy things up a little bit, so. The other lines that we cut to offset that were, I believe it was special events, which would be ten four four zero, uh, seven ten, which in the past, that's another line item that we, we had a new program that we didn't have, and we say we came up with a program in the middle of the year. That's where we pull that money out of, so we cut that back, kinda offset the, the difference. Yes.
So, I guess we gotta pass special needs?
Oh, I was just, just trying to explain that first line and why we, why we're cutting it. Yeah, we can talk about the special needs, so ten four four zero, six ninety. Uh, earlier this year, the, the special needs recreation, they came and talked to you guys about possibly increasing their, their yearly sponsorship. Right now, we're, we're doing uh two thousand dollars. And I know you guys kinda expressed an interest in possibly increasing that, so.
I remember her, I liked her. I can't remember the organization though.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time since that was increased.
Yeah, I think the last increase was in two thousand, I think it was six, fourteen, sixteen, it's been about five or six years.
Eric, do you remember what they were asking for as far as the increase was going?
She asked for a thousand dollars.
Exactly, she asked three thousand.
So, why don't we just throw three eight thousand in there? Does the question work?
Yeah, I didn't put a specific amount, I didn't know if you guys wanted to do the full thousand.
Well, I guess I should ask council, do you have any problem with putting that three thousand in there?
Why don't you talk to you about that?
No, at this point.
I'm good.
Yeah, it's, it's preliminary, it's a draft.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea, actually.
Okay, and then the special events, kinda talked about why we're cutting that back from ten uh thousand down to six. Moving on to ten four four zero, seven sixty, that would be equipment purchases greater than a thousand. Uh, we, we're looking at a new vehicle for the rec department. We are currently using the Ford Explorer that used to belong to the police department. And it's just kinda on its last legs. One of the things that we've talked about wanting, we've kinda kicked it around, do we buy an enclosed trailer? Um, another SUV, and we've kinda decided on a utility van. If you guys know what I'm talking about, it's kinda like a large cargo van. It's kinda serves the purpose of an enclosed trailer and SUV, it's just larger. We can put all of our stuff in there for special events. We can take the seats out, we can use it for an everyday driver if we need to.
Without windows?
Yeah, we could have windows, you can get them with or without windows. Um, you could put seats in it and take people up on the mountain, or if we, you know, had a staff meeting, or some kind of a staff thing, you could take.
You won't, but those are, you're gonna haul people around.
Yeah, so.
Get in the van.
So, is that the only vehicle you guys use right now? It's just that?
The Explorer? Yeah, on the rec side. Yeah, we, we do have a little uh two-wheel-drive Sonoma pickup.
So, thirty-two hundred, thirty-two thousand, must be a used one you're looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, we weren't looking at buying a brand-new one, we were looking at trying to find something, a good-used one that was in good shape. And that also includes uh, a new volleyball system. Uh, right now, we're having to use the school's volleyball equipment, so we're looking at purchasing, I think the vehicle was twenty-eight, and the volleyball system was four, about four thousand dollar, which totals the thirty-two thousand.
How much would be, be a new van?
Just depends on, if you get four-wheel drive, if you get two-wheel drive, or what brand, I, Ford makes, or you can get a Mercedes Benz, it just depends on.
There, there's no cheap cars right now.
No, no.
A new pickup's like eighty thousand dollars.
You know, our city's not going anywhere, unlike possibly Dalton Gardens.
Yeah, you had a.
Well, it's not good in marriage when they don't be Dalton Gardens.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Dalton Gardens.
I'd recommend that we give the police department new vehicles, we should give our city staff new vehicles too.
Are ours police, um, vehicles new?
Oh, yeah.
Every year, oh, yeah.
They've been for a while, but they used to work with used cars too.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. No, every year we.
It's been a while.
We get two or three, depending on the cycle of the year, new vehicles for the county's department.
I agree with uh Stephen, we should get new equipment.
Well, I agree with Stephen also, but I just don't know if this year's a year to do it. Everything's really expensive right now.
What is it expensive?
I'd like to see you have a new one.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. We've always, you know, we've always tried to find something that's in good shape, but used.
Could be a hundred thousand.
I would, I would make a recommendation then on, on this particular line item, Eric could look at what a new vehicle would be comparative to a used vehicle, and when we come back for a final draft of the budget, this could be something that we tag as a decision to kinda make once we know what those numbers are. Cause right now, we're estimating twenty-eight thousand for a used vehicle, until he actually does some research to know what a new vehicle is. We really won't know that number, so if he goes back and looks at a new vehicle, then when we come back for the final budget, this one could be tagged and say, okay, used is twenty-eight, new would be X, and then the council can choose at that time which one they wanna go with, new or used. Does that sound like a?
You need to get more realistic numbers too, because twenty-eight thousand will not buy a used van right now.
So.
They are.
Yeah, Mike.
Um, is it, I'm not sure what the urgency of, of uh vehicle purchase could, is, but is this something where we could budget for half of the expense one year and half the next to kinda spread the cost out a little bit? Um, to say, okay, if we, if we say, whether it's new or, I, I mean, I, I would think that, that we would be able to uh more readily afford a new, or a used vehicle in one year, but if we were to say, you know, let's buy a new vehicle, um, is that something that we can split the cost between two years?
Well, what it, what you could do is earmark fund balance for a purchase of a new vehicle, but it actually goes to the expenditure and the year that the expenditure is made. So, if you earmarked fund balance for equipment purchase, for example, like what we've done with City Hall, and say we earmarked thirty thousand. and say we earmarked thirty thousand dollars and have it restricted, then you could do that, but the next year's budget would show, say, sixty thousand as the expenditure item. Thirty of it coming from the fund balance, which doesn't really show up in the expenditure line, it just shows the sixty thousand.
And and then we it shows debt too, which.
Well, so, I mean, those are, those are your options, you can, you can earmark
Debt's still owed.
And save it, or you, but whenever you spend it, it's gonna be the full amount that's spent, that's gonna be in the in the budget.
This is a vehicle that's not gonna give a lot of miles on it.
No, we don't, we don't typically put many miles on any of our vehicles, I mean, we're in town.
You hardly ever leave town.
Right.
So a good, a good used vehicle is, yeah.
So anyway.
If you bought a new vehicle, it'll wear out due to the parts being irreplaceable before you actually probably wear the vehicle out.
We can have Eric go back and look at both the used and new price, and we'll we'll tag it as an item to be.
It still might not make sense, because low mileage, you could only get parts for so long anymore.
I just, I've just jumped online really quick, and there's a like a two thousand twenty Chevy Express, which is a a large van. It's going, it's thirty-two five, and that's a two thousand twenty.
No, not that one.
Uh. There's a third two thousand twenty-one for thirty-three thousand, so I I don't know.
Probably pretty new.
It says let's see, miles.
Yeah, if it belonged to business, could have a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it in two years.
Yeah, but. Yeah, but like Leon said, I can definitely.
Yeah, bring back some numbers then.
Moving down to sanitation, which would be four four zero seven eighty. Just just a slight increase there to offset the cost of the sanit can units. New programs. Again, we cut that back, that was another line that uh we would use for, if we started a new program, to take the uh funds out for the instructors. So now that we are looking at it uh and creating that new line camps and classes, we would just cut that back to two thousand dollars, and that line item would be used for, like I said, any kind of new program that we would want to try to do or think of after the budget year or something comes up, and we want to try to do uh a program, the the two thousand dollars would be the funds for that.
Yeah, it looks like you got quite a bit left for the four thousand this year, you've only spent, what, a hundred ninety-eight?
That's just through, keep in mind, those were through, I think, March.
Oh, I I know, but he's got a long ways to go to get to two thousand.
Yeah, but a lot of those programs take place in the summer. So, I mean, it's just same thing with the street budget, plus the.
No, I understand, but he's never gonna get to four thousand at that rate, so two thousand makes sense.
You'd be surprised.
Well, the previous year was only nine hundred and three, so.
Yeah, it's in another spot.
And that was a whole year. So four thousand is probably too big a number.
The uh four four zero eight one five, the Strongman, we just, that's an event that's just keeps growing, and we'd like to continue to buy more equipment. So we were just looking at an increase there, thousand dollars. You'll see the zero there, last year, we didn't, weren't able to do it, so. Uh, moving down to four four zero eight fifty-five, December to lights. Each year, we pretty much, you know, we try to add a little bit to that to just add more lights and more decorations throughout the town, and we try to purchase one or two of those uh figures like you'll see on the like the front of City Hall and the ones that we put out here on Highway forty-one. Uh, the Easter egg hunt, that's uh a big increase, just because last year, if you remember, we we used the Easter eggs, or excuse me, this year, we used the Easter eggs from two years ago, is that right?
From last, uh.
The previous year.
From two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
For some reason, we didn't have it.
Yeah. So this year, we're gonna have to purchase eggs again, so uh last year, we didn't budget the money to do that, because we knew we could use the eggs from the previous year, so uh there's an increase there, because we're gonna have to start buying the the Easter eggs again. Four four zero eight seventy, the concert series. Uh, again, we try to add a little bit each year, just better quality vans and and more promoting.
Are you still working with Chris on those?
No, we haven't worked with Chris for quite a few years.
I thought so.
Yeah. Main Street Market, that's uh an event that's gonna stick around, so we've decided it's probably time just to add its own line item, we didn't have a line item for that before. Uh, it would come out of like special events, so we're just gonna add uh a new line for that, and twenty-five hundred dollars, that would cover the the music. So there's three markets, we have live music at each market, uh and then supplies and promotions. Same thing with the movie night series, we just this year, we purchased our own movie screening system. We did a partnership with the police department, they paid for half and we paid for half. So rather than just do one movie a year like we've done in the past, we're gonna do uh this year, we're gonna do three movies, and then probably next year, we'll probably do more. So now that we have our own screening, we're gonna be doing a series, three or four movies uh a year.
That'll be good.
Yeah, will be.
And then the uh the line item there at the bottom, the uh camps and classes, we kind of already talked about that. Uh, where all of our instructors and referees and staff, all that money would come out of that line item.
Case to Rathrum?
Uh, yeah.
Eight seven five?
Yeah, four four zero eight seven five, uh I you know, we've done pretty well with that, so I don't really see a reason to increase.
Well, you have nothing.
There's nothing there, there's nothing in there.
Say four thousand?
Well, I did, we weren't gonna change.
No, that's fine, there just was no number.
I I see what you're saying, yeah, it would just stay at the four thousand. I I understand what you're saying. There wouldn't be an increase or anything there.
They'd be careful budgeting to do it for free.
Yeah, and you wouldn't have any money to pay for the van. But that is. We did cemetery, yeah. I don't know if you guys have any questions, there was a couple of things that I wanted to.
I think I have a comment.
Yeah.
I know that we're not gonna talk about wages and salaries tonight, but I'm gonna talk about them.
I was gonna talk about the bring up the rec recreation uh salaries.
Go ahead.
Okay. So our park and rec, we had a park and rec commission meeting last night. One of the commissioners brought up um with the wages going up recently. It's not time to maybe bump up uh our starting wages for some of our recreation uh kids, the scorekeepers, referees. Right now, they're starting at about eight bucks an hour. I know other places you can go start, uh the grocery store, you can start at twelve, fourteen dollars an hour, so.
McDonald's, Taco Bell.
So it it's probably time to think about uh you know, maybe increasing the wages for our rec kids, eight dollars an hour is pretty tough.
How many applicants do you have so far?
Four.
Those positions. How many you got for park and rec uh staff or uh somewhere else?
Applications, we just posted the job, I believe, yesterday, so I don't know. I mean, we all, we have a continuous file for applications for seasonal workers.
Right, I know, but you, I see, uh, we talked about this the other night, is Post Falls is having such a trough problem, their vehicles actually have on the back of now, parking rec hiring park and recreation. And I'm suggesting we may have to do that same thing, because right now, it's hard to get labor.
Everywhere is looking for people, everywhere.
Remember, um, we approved, they go ahead and move forward with getting a planner for the city to replace Kerry.
Yeah.
Um, we have gotten three applications so far.
Wow.
Not a one of them, I didn't look at the one that just came in this week while I was out.
Probably from Dalton Gardens.
But uh, but of those, none of them had specific planning experience.
That's too bad.
And that's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, but it's gonna be hard to find people, and it's gonna be really hard at eight bucks an hour.
Although uh the uh employment's gonna go down too.
In June.
So what are you thinking would be a good range of, to offer these new people?
I I think ten dollars would be, keep in mind, a lot of these kids are fourteen, they could start working in the rec at fourteen, or in the parks, they have to be eighteen, so.
Because of the equipment.
Right, yeah.
Do you usually get enough kids to sign up?
Um, it's been, this year has been a little bit tougher, but we we got enough kids to do that.
What do we pay the crossing guards?
I'd have to look it up, Mayor.
Well, that is substantially more than that, though.
Well, I'd imagine so, if you give me a minute, I can go look it up.
Oh, it's, I was just curious.
Might might as well, that, yeah, that's fine.
You want to look it up?
I want him to look at it. Cause I think if the kids are fourteen, and I think if we start about at ten, that's too much. At fourteen, but if the kids are.
I don't even know what pays babysitting anymore.
Is it like, they make eight now, you said?
They started.
If they have no experience and they're fourteen and they're just getting started, it's eight bucks, yeah.
Yeah. But the older kids, I think they could get a little bit more, because they're.
Each year or season they come back, we give them a quarter, sometimes fifty cents. And then, like, we have field and gym supervisors, which would be like Sheila and Cora. Uh, they get paid, not a lot more, but they get paid a little bit more, I get, I think they're at eleven fifty.
They're older and
Yeah.
have done it for several years.
Yeah.
And maybe that's where the increase should be, is paying them a little more than a quarter or fifty cents to come back.
Right.
You don't have to train them again.
Is the development of the mountain not part of this budget?
It's public works, though we can discuss it, I I I think.
No, that's fine, cause public works is.
Not a good person, yeah.
Okay.
You've been wandering mine, haven't you?
I do. Are we allowed to?
Micycles.
About that.
I know.
The one thing, what was your question?
Oh, about the mountain, the one thing that I did wanna talk about is, and I know, I saw a couple of the want, wish list, was was the bike and the the develop, the continue to develop with the trail designer. Uh, parking is becoming kind of an issue up there, so that might be something that we started to plan for, parking on the weekends is, there almost is none, it's getting so busy up there, so. I know that up there, parking area was kind of slated for when we did another tree harvest, but that might be something that we look at, maybe bumping up on the schedule a little bit.
What are we doing out at?
There's not a lot of space up there for parking, though.
No, we, we talked about just clearing that whole area out, I don't know which parking it would create, but at least it would be a little bit extra parking.
Our crossing guard, I just pulled up one of our crossing guards, uh is at twelve dollars an hour.
Okay.
So I have a question on Majestic Park, what are we doing out there this year, are we adding anything new out there?
No, no, no major projects, we're learning, we need park gap, we do.
But we don't have land for parking.
We put in the new uh storage building, I mean, that was.
It's funny, parking is always a premium. Who owns the right of way on the east end of Majestic, do we have out out?
The Meyer?
Well, there's uh like an alley on the east end of parties.
Oh, there's the tower.
And the water tower.
Yeah, the road you drive to get to the water tower.
I can look it up on the map. You're talking about the.
It goes down the hill.
I think it's, I think it's right of way, but maybe it isn't, maybe it's just Myers.
Are you talking right next to the water south?
Just next to the park, the east side of the park.
Yeah, the dirt road.
Uh, so it it's not marked off as right of way yet, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It's part of uh that dirt road that goes down there is part of City Rathrum property.
So the road is City Rathrum? Well, there's our answer, we put a lot of diagonal parking there.
If it's light enough, yeah, I don't know.
Think it is. You know, we're talking about now, Rick.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you could definitely put diagonal parking.
The question is, Mr. Mayor, is there enough width to put diagonal parking and have two lanes of traffic?
Oh, they get, yeah, maybe not too late.
Because you'd have to come in and park diagonal, I know that there'd be enough room there, but when you get out, you've gotta be able to come down the road and do some travel back.
There's a place you could turn around.
Kevin, it probably wouldn't accommodate.
Too late to traffic.
Let's, let's get Kevin out there, take a look and see if we can.
All right, I'll put that on the list for him.
Like, is it, like he doesn't have enough to do?
What's on the south side? I'm fast.
Mort, or who owns that land on the south?
That's uh, that is Cliff uh Cliff Mort, and that's the duplex project.
The duplexes are, to me, that's on the west side, but so the south side would be, it's an empty field right now.
Yeah.
But I think it could be Meyer.
I'm looking at the bottom.
Yeah, I think the bottom is more Cliff Mort, the very bottom, isn't it?
Yes, the duplexes.
So.
See where the numbers are there, that's, that's.
Yes, but his whole project goes all the way to this borderline right here.
Oh, okay.
Um, and that's all different phases of those duplexes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have the shared, I should share it this second.
So the only thing we have is to the east end, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the streets, which is traditionally where we park.
We could use, build a park aid out there.
We need parking downtown, too.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
We're getting a lot to park in lots of.
Okay, I'm done. Uh, so yeah, that was uh just to talk about the mountain, that was one of the things that I wanted to bring up was just the the need, it's not immediate, but it's coming soon, is, I'm gonna need to do something with, expand the parking up there.
Parking up there will be harder than you think, because you're breathing out.
These little people, sir.
That might be an option.
With the new van?
Yeah. So there's one thing I'll throw at you, uh Post Falls years ago captured a couple surplus school buses, which sell pretty cheap, and that's what they do when they have an event, is they run shuttles, so like here, you'd say, park at John Brown or park at K-Tech, hop on the school bus and we'll take you, and it just, they keep round tripping them. And it works really well.
Bet you did that with the grand opening of the mountain.
Yeah, we did it here, but.
Then you have to have a driver, and then you have to have insurance and.
We have drivers and insurance.
No, there wasn't any changes or anything with our calls. About this year.
So Mayor and Council, I apologize, when I stepped out of there, did did we decide on a price tag for starting for the?
We didn't. We didn't, does anybody have a number they want, ten sounds comfortable to me.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, when he first started talking about it.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
And then Eric was saying while you were gone, that usually they give them like a quarter or fifty cents if they come back.
Of an increase?
Yeah, and I almost think that needs to be increased too, because you want to encourage them to come back, you've already trained them, you're not spending money there.
Basically, we're looking at a two-dollar increase on all of them. Because if you got a one that's been there for a while, and they're now at nine fifty, for example, and you raise everybody starting to ten, they're actually below the.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is a quarter isn't gonna bring me back to next year.
Well, that's typically, that's per season, that's not in the year. So they they rep in the spring and then come back and
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Okay. But those are the guys you want back, they already know what they're doing.
Right. So you're thinking?
Well, in another thing, you gotta be careful, if you raise it up fifty cents apiece and you started at fourteen, you could be making quite a bit, like, if this was fifty cents per season.
Well, you'd have to cap it.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, they come back and they'd be at ten again, right?
What do you mean?
Well, they don't get a yearly increase.
Yeah.
So they come back to next year.
He just said it's seasonal.
It's seasonal, so if they.
I get it, but if you capped it.
Oh, if you capped it like fourteen, you could.
Cap it at twelve bucks or something.
Okay.
There's a guy that's been there through three or four seasons, worth two dollars more, and the kid you gotta train, and you wonder if he's gonna, uh, break a window, we, we got all kinds of stuff happening.
Yeah, our seasonal parks workers, we start at, uh, about fourteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, you can't get them up, up to where they are.
And that's, we checked with other cities, that's about what everybody else is paying for parks, maintenance workers, seasonal workers.
Well, hopefully, we all get through the summer with employees.
We've, we've been seeing, uh, not that we've seen a lot of turnover here, although Parks Department just lost. Two people, the Recreation lost one, and the Park Maintenance Supervisor just resigned. Um, both of them are moving out of town, but, uh, it is becoming very difficult to hire people right now. And a lot of that comes from this push of unemployment checks getting extra, so there's less workers out there that wanna take a job. That's driving the price of, uh, employment up, but hopefully, come next month, when that three hundred dollar a week incentive. Goes away, maybe we'll see some more activity in that, but it's getting really concerning, Mayor and Council, uh, to find. People to fill vacancies, um, we're seeing it all over, I think Taco Bell's now at fourteen dollars an hour.
And I think we'll signing bonus now.
Yeah, and some of them are doing signing bonuses, and I see that even some of those restaurants are doing interview days, where you come and you can get free food and interview, and. Uh, I saw at Kohl's, we were there at Kohl's the other day, and they're advertising on sandwich boards up front of the thing. That you can text a number and you'll get an interview, and you can be hired within twenty-four hours.
Wow.
Is what, and trying to create those incentives, um, in order to get people to take up jobs, I hope. I hope that when that three hundred dollar incentive goes away, that things will stabilize out, but my concern is. Now that the market's already started to do that, and it may continue to do that, so. Those, those might be some things that we have to consider when we start getting into the personnel, uh, discussion in July, that's when we've got that scheduled. So we'll see some of the initial reaction to losing that three hundred and see if that changes things, but. Uh, it, it, it's, that's gonna be a very tough question this year, is what we do with that.
So how many positions need to be filled in the Park and Rec Department?
Uh, two, full-time positions, so we lost Mike, who's the Park and Rec Assistant, and then we lost, uh, Gary, who's our Park Supervisor.
So, and then, part-time guys, God only knows, maybe they won't be around, seasonal.
Yeah, right now, we've got a pretty good, uh, group of seasonal guys that they wanna stick around, so.
Well, glad to hear that.
Anybody who can bump up into the, either one of those open positions?
Yeah, yeah, there is one, one person that could definitely go into a full-time position.
Okay.
It's always good. Okay, did you have more?
That is it, other than, um, did we wanna talk about, after the mountain, since it's in public works, or line item as far as increases, or?
Um, I'd almost recommend at this point that we pull it out of public works and put it into the Parks Department, that'd be my thought.
We originally had it in there because of the road, it took several years to get that developed, and I think that's a good idea. Move it.
Create a lot.
Under parks.
Okay.
And put the budget that we've had in, in that, remove it over.
No, we still need to call it open space.
Rath, we'll call it Rathron Mountain, we won't call it Parks.
Yeah, we called Park.
But we can put it under maybe Recreation, how's that?
Yeah, let's do Recreation.
That's not gonna fly.
Is it probably, is it a problem that it's in Public Works?
No, but it's not gonna fly into Recreation.
Why don't we leave it under Public Works?
I think they have to improvements and purchase large things, that's your type.
I think we should leave it under Public Works.
Okay, I don't think, I'm not comfortable doing that.
In the Public Works?
No, I, it's fine leaving it there, but I'm. Recreation is, you might as well put it under Cemetery at that point.
Yeah.
Sorry, but. I, I wish you, I wish you'd just say what you mean. What you're aiming for.
So one of the wishlist, uh, things, uh, was a bike, a bike.
Just some way for people to get around the mountain quickly, he wouldn't go for the enduro bike last year, so I just thought I'd bore my sights a little bit.
Are you gonna ride it, Steven?
No, it'd be for, it'd be for staff to get.
No, I'm.
Come and race, that's stuff to get around.
And if someone gets hurt up there, you know, if, you know, someone on the city is up there already. You know, they can quickly get to where they need to go. Right, it's, when you're walking up, near an old guy like me walking up that hill, I don't go very fast, I don't go faster, so I, I, I just think. You guys need an easy way to get around up there.
Digger with the back.
It's not a small area.
Don't you use the four-by-fours up there now?
We have, we have a four-wheel, our four-wheeler, ATV, and the, the main road goes pretty much up the center of the property, so we can get pretty much anywhere in a hurry.
Yeah, but the lower trails are, they're barely wide enough for a person.
Yeah. If we were gonna do something like that, I would, personally, would rather go back to the idea of having a motorized, like, uh, enduro, like a bike, yeah.
Yeah, I just envisioned this enduro motorcycle, with the flat rack on the back, and he has his chainsaw, and, you know, a medical kit. And whatever else he needs to just do stuff up there.
Is it enduro like a trail-minded kinda?
More powerful.
It's a, it's like a, a regular dirt bike, but as.
But it's more for.
And the daylight and stuff like that, yeah.
So, is it for streets?
Both, it's like the old trials.
So it can go either way, okay.
Right.
I wasn't sure.
Remember an X, not an XR, but an XL?
Yeah.
Street legal?
Yeah.
Kinda like that.
But if you're to boss, if you don't feel a need for it, then.
Yeah.
Fine. But I still think you guys ought to get some good GPS devices, so you can map stuff up there. I'm just thinking about mountain.
At least I used to think it was my mountain. I fought so long to get people up there, that.
Yeah.
That's true.
We can look up prices, and then we'll come back with the final, we can report on those flagged items that we've talked about tonight.
Okay.
All right, so I think it's about time I say, see, no further city business before, so, without objection, we are adjourned.
Yay.